Thank you. Good evening and welcome to the City of Pleasant Hill City Council Meeting for May 15. We are also live at 150 Southfield Avenue Apartment 1201 in Stamford, Connecticut. Our council member Sue Noack appearing remotely and she's open for business on the East Coast for Pleasant Hill. With that in mind, if you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America.
States of America.
To the Republic.
And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Just keep rolling. Thank you, but we have the roll call.
Noack.
Here.
Rin.
Here.
Chess.
Here.
Vincent.
There.
Flaherty.
Here. Let me just give you public participation instructions. If you want to join us, please come down to City Hall here at 100 Gregory Lane or go to Apartment 1201 on 150 Southfield Avenue in Stamford, Connecticut. You can also participate remotely by contacting us at www.zoom.us. The meeting ID is 829-4672-8683. The passcode is 716-129. You could also call on the phone at area code 669-900-6833. Apologize for our tardy start. We were in a closed session, but I have nothing to report out from the closed session. So we're just going to move right along and we have a lot of presentations this evening and very excited to deliver them. So item 5.1, we have awards of appreciation to Mike McDonald for service on the Commission on Aging from 2022 to 2023 and to Kathy Eris for her service on the Commission on Aging from 2015 to 2023. I'd like to invite both, I think, Mike and Kathy up to the podium, but before I give you the green light that you can, you know, take the microphone, I just want to deliver some comments about the service of both of you, for which we're very appreciative. Mike McDonald joined the Commission on Aging in the middle of the pandemic at the beginning of 2021 to finish the remaining term of another commissioner. He immediately jumped into helping the Commission plan webinars with the Senior Center, wrote several Outlook newsletter articles, and served as the committee's chair from mid-2022 until his term ended this past April. During the four months, the Commission met via Zoom during Chair McDonald's term. You could see and hear his enthusiasm and energy shine through the computer screen. So thank you, Mike. Turning to Kathy. Kathy was appointed to the Commission on Aging in May 2015 and immediately brought new energy and enthusiasm to the group. She always counted upon, she was always counted upon to show up to the meetings and commission events with a cheerful smile and her eyes shining brightly with excitement. Commissioner Eris was active in making the Commission's caregiver retreats success, was an enthusiastic technician at the Commission's Carthage events, and always pitched in to lend a hand for the Commission's activities and webinars. Commissioner Eris loved volunteering in the city booth at the annual art, wine, and music festival. Will you be there this year? No, you won't. All right. She wrote numerous articles for the city's Outlook newsletter and served as vice chair for one year and as the chair for four years before finally convincing someone else to take on the role, probably Mike. Ms. Eris was also, most recently, the subcommittee that created the new Commission logo and issued the Aging Well Survey currently active on the city's website. Although she's leaving the Commission, Kathy continues to stay connected to the Commission as a volunteer dispatcher for the senior van service as well as for the senior book delivery service with the Pleasant Hill Library. So, one, thank you both. And Mike, I invite you to say a few words if you like.
I just thank you for the privilege and opportunity, Daniel, who's moved on, is spectacular and it was just a humbling and wonderful experience to be able to serve in this capacity. We felt supported and respected and listened to by the City Council and we just, I know that I didn't continue on simply because I'm in the process of merging my business. And so in a year, you'll probably see my face back. Tim interviewed me the first time, so anyway, so thank you for the privilege and opportunity, but this is the woman who works hard.
Thank you, Mike. Just pull the microphone towards you. Perfect. And Kathy Eris, please. The stage is yours.
Oh, thanks. I just want to say it has been a pleasure and honor. It was rewarding. I'm so glad that the city has these opportunities for citizen volunteers to be a part of it. And I just, I, I, I think it's always important for any kind of civic commission to, to be able to stay relevant, that you need new people and you need new ideas. I'm not rotating off because I'm tired of it. I just think that, you know, it's time for new ideas. And so, but I have thoroughly enjoyed every year that I've been involved. I do have one suggestion I want you guys to consider adding one word to our Commission on Aging title. I think it should be Commission on Aging Well, because that says a lot about what we're trying to do to make people really age, feel comfortable aging well, you know, in this community. That's my parting request.
Well, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thanks so much.
Sure.
Okay, so next we have item 5.2, which is Introduction of Commission on Aging Commissioners that are Taking Over, Linda Fisher and Dana Simmons. Are they here? I see Linda's here. Is Dana here, maybe online? Oh, great. Could you bring her in? I'm waiting for Dana to appoint you to come into the room.
Dana, can you hear us?
Oh, yes, I can. Thank you.
There she is. Hi, Dana. So just for general knowledge, council member Alan Vincent and I serve as the Interview and Nominating Subcommittee for the City Council, and we had the privilege of both interviewing Linda and Dana and many other candidates for the appointments to the Commission on Aging. And I'm pleased to introduce the two top candidates. Then we're just thrilled that they're willing to volunteer, and that is Linda Fisher and Dana Simmons. Linda joins the Commission, bringing over 20 years of experience in senior-level management in senior care at facilities, including assisted living and memory care facilities. And is a fairly new resident, living here in Pleasant Hill for just over a year, but she can walk to City Hall if she wants and she could walk to work. I understand Linda attended her first Commission meeting, has jumped right in by volunteering and being elected to serve as the Chair of the Commission. Welcome, Linda.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. And yes, that's just stupidity and ignorance. No one else would do it, so I did. But I, yes, as you said, I've been in senior care for over 20 years. This is my first foray into anything like this, though. And I am very grateful to have the opportunity to marry two of my great loves, which is love for seniors and now a love for Pleasant Hill. It is awesome. I never want to leave. And I, I feel like we have a chance to make, to work anyway, toward making Pleasant Hill the best place on earth to grow old. And I love the Aging Well because it is all about that. The alternative is not an option. Let's, let's do it right. So I think we have a lot of opportunity, but I am very grateful to you, Mayor Flaherty, and to the commissioners for this appointment and for this opportunity to serve. Thank you.
We're thrilled that you've found Pleasant Hill and are making it your home. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Right. And let's turn over to Dana. I've known Dana for going on maybe 20 years since Dana and I were in grammar school. Dana and I served on the Civic Action Commission, oh, earlier this century. But Dana is not new to the Commission on Aging. She's been serving on the Commission the past couple of years as, in an ex officio capacity, as the Senior Club Board President. She also serves as a substitute dispatcher for the Senior Van Service and is on the Pleasant Hill Police Chiefs of Citizen Advisory Panel. Her active involvement in the community, especially with the senior population, will be an asset to this Commission. Dana, I invite you to say a few words.
Well, thank you so much for appointing me. I, I really enjoyed my time on the Commission as an ex officio member and did mona leave, so I applied and so I really appreciate the appointment. And we're quite busy and have a number of events coming up. And I will continue looking out for seniors that, almost every volunteer thing I do involves seniors, so I don't know how that happened. I guess it's because I became a senior. So anyhow, I'm delighted. I thank you very much for this opportunity.
Dana, thank you for your continued commitment to the Pleasant Hill community. Very much appreciate it. This is just a good night. Item 5.3, Awards of Appreciation to Dave Clute for Service on the Education Commission from 2018 through 2023 and to Jennifer Anderson for Service on the Education Commission from 2012 to 2023. Either Jennifer is here. Is Dave here? Oh, Dave, hello. Come, come forward. Yeah, this is your life. So let me say a few words about the both of you. And the comments I've gotten are from the people that you've been serving on the Commission with and the staff people that you have worked with. So turning to Dave. Dave joined the Commission in 2018 and quickly showed his passion and commitment to the education of Pleasant Hill students. He has been an excellent moderator of difficult conversations, often helped to distill big discussions into actionable items. Dave served as vice chair from August 2020 through June of 2022, and in the past year he has taken on the role of Commission Chair. Dave has brought that same big picture thinking to many of the issues addressed. Most recently, he has led the chair, the charge to get back to more public events and get the Commission back to pre-pandemic level of activity. Well, thank you, Dave. And then there's Jennifer. Jennifer joined the Commission, Education Commission, in 2012 and has been an invaluable resource to the city. As her children progressed through school in the Mount Diablo Unified School District, she shared her experience and perceptions with the Commission. Jennifer served as vice chair from June 2017 through July 2020 and as chair from August 2020 through June of 2022. As chairperson, she provided a wealth of knowledge to Commission discussions and her leadership was incredibly helpful as we navigated COVID-19 pandemic, Zoom meetings, and to change in how meetings are done. Her deep institutional knowledge and calm presence will be greatly missed. As education commissioners, each of you invested your time, your talents, and your unique perspectives to the Commission while advocating for quality, education, and Pleasant Hill. On behalf of the City Council, we are tremendously grateful and the residents of Pleasant Hill are fortunate to have had your education. So again. Dave and Jennifer, please, some parting thoughts.
Parting thoughts. Thank you. Those were nice words. I'm a little, little embarrassed, but I, I would just say that I have been so thankful to be a part of the Education Commission and just so proud to be part of a city that places so much emphasis on education. And that has just been a great joy to me. And I would, on a more personal note, say that I have just met the best people and my participation in this Commission and also coming to City Council meetings. A couple of years ago in 2018, I was diagnosed with cancer and went through a difficult health time and the commissioners and some of you that are here and the council were the first people to my house when, first people with meals and first people there, and that was also very meaningful to me. So I just want to say another public thanks and I've been so grateful. So thank you.
Thank you.
I also really appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to the last four and a half years to serve on the Education Commission. As Jennifer mentioned, it's a unique thing that Pleasant Hill has an Education Commission. Most surrounding cities do not. And it's a, it's a really important commission in the city and it's been an honor to be a part of it. I've reminded Commission the last year or so that in a city of 35,000 people, if we can just turn a few more people's attention towards our schools, I think our entire city will be better. I think education is a long-term investment that's really worthwhile, not just of our financial resources, but also our time, our tangible resources, and our civic imagination. And I think our city will only benefit the more we can spend our time, energy, and imagination caring for our local schools. So I really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you very much. It's been an honor to serve.
Oh my gosh, Dave, Jennifer, thank you. We have an award for you. Thank you both. Thank you. Okay, item 5.4, Introduction of Diversity Commissioners, Daniel Rodriguez, Lloyd Sheen, and Jana Thompson. Who's in? I see Jana. See Daniel? And I see Lloyd. Okay, come on down. So this evening, I'm pleased to introduce to you three candidates, three of the candidates that were recommended to this, by the Interview and Nominating Subcommittee and appointed by the City Council to the Diversity Commission, Daniel Rodriguez, Lloyd Sheen, and Jana Thompson. Daniel is interested in serving this community we live in with a focus on making it a better place for our children. On his resume, he stated his objective is wanting to work with a purpose-driven organization that shares my values on social justice and sustainability while utilizing my experience in construction management and change management. Daniel ran for the City Council in the November 2022 ballot and, but had to withdraw for family reasons, but applied to serve as a number, as a number of city commissions. His interest in social justice and his enthusiasm will be an asset to the Diversity Commission. I'm just going to go through the three of you together and then you can, you know, just, you know, fight for the microphone. Next is Lloyd Sheen. Lloyd is well-known to the city. He's been a very active member of the Civic Action Commission as well as been the leading voice of the Diversity Subcommittee of the Civic Action Commission. So as new to the Diversity Commission, he will recognize the diverse populations in Pleasant Hill and the contributions made to the community by those diverse populations. As a Commissioner on the Civic Action Commissioner, Lloyd contributed to the Summer Concert Series as well in the Community Service Day, but he deserves such significant recognition for developing and facilitating the community conversations online during the COVID-19 pandemic, highlighting issues to be addressed, including mental health and youth, issues facing the LGBTQ community. And being that it is both Jewish American Heritage Month and Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, I should mention that Lloyd facilitated community conversations on both of these topics last year. Given Lloyd's experience, he is sure to be an asset in helping the newest of city commissions as it further defines its role in the city. And then finally, we have Jana Thompson. Jana clearly has an interest to be actively involved in the community and to making a contribution that enhances the lives of the residents of Pleasant Hill. She also ran to be elected to the City Council on the November 2022 ballot, and afterward she applied to be appointed to fill the vacancy on the City Council created when Councilmember Ken Carlson was elected as board supervisor. And thereafter, she applied to serve on a number of city commissions. Jana and all of her presentations has been the most well-prepared, prepared to respond to questions on commissions she was interested in and considering where she might best fit in at this moment in time. The Diversity Commission to, to the council seemed to be the next great step for Jana and her contributions to the community. Her background as a program coordinator serving immigrant children, experience creating programs and activity for those children, and certification as a behavior analyst, and most important, her passion to help others will lead to Jana making valuable contributions to the Diversity Commission. And with that, I'm going to give you all a round of applause. And to give us any opening remarks.
Thank you, everyone here, for allowing me this opportunity. Honestly, listening to these two, I'm just happy to be working alongside both of them. Carson, I've, I've looked at yours as well. I'm just really looking forward to this opportunity. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Flaherty, City Council. I've loved being on the Civic Action Commission and I'm very excited for this new opportunity to continue to support in the Diversity Commission to make Pleasant Hill welcoming and inclusive community. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you, Lloyd.
I want to thank you all for this opportunity and I am very excited to dive in and serve the community on the Diversity Commission. And I promise I'll continue to come prepared. You know, I have my notes. Today I don't. I thought I'd try something different to say. Thank you all.
Thank you all, three of you. Keeping it all in the family, item 5.5 is a proclamation designating June 2, 2023 as Gun Violence Awareness Day. I will invite Cree Campbell Sheen up here. She's the Survivor Lead for Greater Mount Diablo Moms Demand Action. Welcome, Cree. I'll read the proclamation or excerpts from it and then allow you to take it. Like a one council member show tonight here. So whereas every day more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence and more than 200 are shot and wounded, with an average of more than 17,000 gun homicides every year. Whereas in an average year, 3,253 people die by guns in California. Whereas cities across the nation, including Pleasant Hill, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas protecting public safety in Pleasant Hill is the City Council's highest priority. And whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton was tragically shot and killed at age 15. And on June 2, 2023, to recognize that her 26th birthday, people across the United States will recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange, the color hunters wear to announce themselves to other hunters, symbolizing the value of human life in tribute to her, other victims of gun violence, and their loved ones. And whereas by wearing orange on June 2, 2023, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence. Now therefore, I, Timothy M. Flaherty, Mayor of the City of Pleasant Hill, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the first Friday in June, June 2, 2023, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day here in the City of Pleasant Hill and encourage all our citizens to support efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. Thank you, Cree, for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you. So my name is Cree Campbell Sheen and I am a volunteer with Moms Demand Action. I'm also a mother. And, you know, it's just something that we really wanted to express our gratitude to you for taking the time to acknowledge this important cause and to bring awareness to our community. So we invite all of you to wear orange on June 2 and everyone at home to wear orange as well and find, there are a lot of local events, so please join us as we continue to fight for innocence in our city and nationwide.
Thank you, Cree.
Thank you.
Proclamation. For the photo.
That's okay.
Item 5.6 is a proclamation designating the month of May as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. The new Chair of the Diversity Commission, Carson Sprott, is here. Welcome, Carson, as you're making your way to the podium. I'll just give a couple of excerpts from the proclamation that the city is issuing. Whereas the month of May was chosen as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month to commemorate the immigration of the first Japanese citizen, Nakahama Manjuro, to the United States on May 7, 1843, and also the anniversary of the May 10, 1869 completion of the first transcontinental railroad built with the backbreaking labor of nearly 20,000 Chinese immigrants. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is observed during the month of May to recognize the contributions and influence of Asian Americans and Pacific Islander Americans to the history, culture, and achievements of the United States. And whereas Pleasant Hill is committed to providing comprehensive support to ensure that it is equitable and welcoming to all people. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is an opportunity to celebrate the great pride and vibrancy of the AAPI population in Pleasant Hill, whose abilities, essential contributions, sacrifices, and accomplishments strengthen our local and state economy, our diverse culture, and our community. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Tim Flaherty, Mayor of the City of Pleasant Hill, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim May 2023 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Pleasant Hill and call this observance to the attention of all our citizens. So welcome, Carson.
Thank you, sir. And, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Council members, thank you very much. I, from, from the Commission, I really appreciate you recognizing the contributions of a community that makes up at least 15% of the plus, of the City of Pleasant Hill. This is, the AAPI community has woven itself into the tapestry of California, perhaps more than many other states. We have benefited from the presence, the contributions, and the sacrifices of the AAPI community. So thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you for all the work the Diversity Commission does. I have a proclamation. Moving along to item six, it's City Manager Comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I wanted to thank our three sponsors of our outdoor warrior watch parties. We had two. We were hoping to have more, but alas, it was not to be this year, maybe next year. But our partners in this, which is Stay Pleasant Hill, the Pleasant Hill Chamber of Commerce, and Off the Grid, all contributed to make this a very successful event. And I know that a lot of people and their families in particular not enjoyed not only the games themselves, but we had movies for children beforehand, before the two games, and the feedback we got was that that was very much appreciated. Also, I'd like to remind everyone that Art, Wine, and Music is this weekend, Saturday and Sunday, from 10 to 6 p.m. here in the downtown. And the event will have a lot of vendors selling of And the event will have a lot of vendors selling a variety of goods, a VIP wine tent, a beer garden, local musicians, as well as local dancers, and a kids' zone with fun and games. Uh, the city will also have an informational booth, tent for the public to ask questions. And you can find more information on the Pleasant Hill Chamber of Commerce website. Also a note that Juneteenth is coming up. Uh, the city is holding an event on June 18th to celebrate that day. We're getting press out on that this week. Also, just a reminder that the website and social media technical assistance grant program, which provides grants up to $7,500 to Pleasant Hill businesses, has 19 applications to date and additional businesses are encouraged to apply. And you can find more information on our website. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you. Any questions with the city manager? Then we'll move to item seven, 7.1, city council, uh, announcements and reports. Uh, reports from council members on meetings or conferences attended at city expense. There was a contra Costa mayor's conference hosted by the city of San Ramon on May 4, 2023. Who wants to report out on that? I was not there. Uh, let's have our, uh, council member from Connecticut.
Well, because the, the theme was transportation related, I, I guess I, I thought I should probably report out on it. Uh, our presentation at the mayor's conference was on Valley Link, which is a proposed train from the Tracy area into the Dublin Pleasanton Bart Station, hoping to alleviate a lot of the traffic on 580. Um, so they were awarded a fairly sizable grant to, um, start that process up. And so they're pretty excited about that. Um, I don't, I don't think construction will be expected until the beginning of 2026, uh, but it's going to require quite a bit of planning first. And the only other thing I would note at the event was it was good to see Mayor Dave Hudson from San Ramon hosting the meeting as he is, uh, recovering from a fairly serious stroke. So it was good to see him. That's it.
Thank you for that report. Uh, I attended that meeting as well. Did anyone else, um, council? I guess it was just Councilmember Noack and myself. Uh, any other meetings anyone attended at city expense? Then how about item 7.2, just general announcements from council members? Vice Mayor Rin?
Sure, I'll lead it off. Uh, I had the honor and privilege of attending Diablo Valley College's, uh, ribbon cutting and unveiling of their new art building. It was paid for by Measure E. Uh, quite a fantastic building, uh, specializing in the arts and media. And it's really good to see, um, them investing in that. Um, also attended, um, representing the city, uh, Burcher Hathaway Chili Cookoff. Somebody's got to do it. Uh, so I had to judge that. And, uh, Pleasant Hill Baseball Association, uh, their end of season banquet as well. That concludes my report.
Councilmember Vincent?
I had, um, I attended the Wreckin Park, uh, Laugh, Love and Learn event at the senior center a couple of weeks ago. There are a number of vendors there that provide services for our, our seniors and there were, uh, classes in the early, late morning. So, that was a fun event.
Thank you. Councilmember Chess?
Attended the, we had an economic development subcommittee meeting, uh, where we get to hear about the, you know, Pleasant Hill perks, program starting up and the other. And you, you took, uh, most of the other, uh, thunder there in terms of what we talked about, uh, there as well. I also wanted to take responsibility for the Warriors winning last week at the, uh, Off the Grid thing as well. That was great. Um, I, I, I think it's because we were there that they won, right?
Absolutely.
At the record shop. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. I was at both Off the Grid Warrior Show Warrior Games and thanked the city and the sponsors for making that. Uh, it's just a wonderful community event. And the addition of the family movie ahead of time also was, I think, even more popular than the Warrior game. Uh, on, on May 9, I attended the ribbon cutting for the Tesla Start Manufacturing Program at Diablo Valley College. Tesla has sponsored a sort of workforce educational program. Uh, they intend to graduate about 75 students a year, three classes of 25. Students are paid during, as they learn the robotics of the maintenance and engineering of keeping the Tesla manufacturing line, uh, going during the manufacturing process. And so Tesla underwrites the program. DVC manages the program and teaches a Tesla, the donated, um, 6D robot robotics. Uh, the classroom is quite impressive, uh, and engaged in a couple of discussions with some of the Tesla public outreach about other opportunities for Tesla to invest in our community, whether it be, uh, service, uh, model stations, or they're also interested in workforce housing. Uh, and, uh, trying to kickstart some discussions with them about that, as well as some other public engagement. So very excited about the opportunity to meet, uh, the Tesla people. You know, on May 6, we had a special city council meeting. It was on a Saturday afternoon. It was in our community room. And it was on a special purpose for discussing the, the ongoing district elections and mapping for that. But, uh, just if you haven't had a chance to review that online, you might want to take a look at it. It was, it was informal. It was a lot more, uh, uh, Socratic question and answer, uh, than sort of the, the formal, uh, opportunity we have to speak here. So I just, I liked that. I really enjoyed that opportunity. So thank all those who participated either in person, online for that. Uh, and with that, I think that's the end of council member announcements. Oh, Sue, uh, you, you gave us all your announcements already, correct? Or did you have more?
Uh, no, I, I, I apologize and I, I thank, uh, thank everybody for putting up with me being here, but my 91-year-old dad had valve replacement. So I am here supporting my dad for a couple of weeks. So I will be participating in a lot of these meetings by Zoom and appreciate everybody's indulgence with that. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we'll move to item eight. This is a public comment. The public is welcome at this time to address the city council on items on the consent calendar or items not listed on the agenda, but within our jurisdiction. Uh, there's an opportunity to comment on the agenda items as we actually call them. Uh, if you're not here in person, but possibly on Zoom, again, just remind you, the Zoom ID is 82946728683. The passcode is 716129. And the telephone number is 669-900-6833. I do have one card, assume for general public comment from Mr. Kattenberg, or is that for an item on the agenda?
Good evening, Mayor Flaherty and council members. I'm going to feel kind of like the Grinch. This is, this has been a wonderful evening of all sorts of positive stuff, and I'm afraid what I have to say doesn't quite come under that category. Uh, my name is Bob Kattenberg. My wife and I have lived in Pleasant Hills since 1989. Live at 465 Boyd Road. Mayor Flaherty, uh, based on what you said at the end of the, that Saturday meeting a couple of Saturdays ago, maybe you want to take notes. The April 17th city council meeting where you, where you dealt with the request from Kevin Finkus to overturn the ruling by the planning uh, department regarding his front fence was really disheartening. Uh, among other things, I found it to be, uh, a shameful disregard for the voices of city citizens. Um, since public comments are a matter of public record, I want to say I introduced myself to Kevin Finkus this morning uh, at his home. Uh, among other things, he told me he had walked the entire neighborhood, um, uh, as part of this process and gotten signatures from 65 homeowners, none of whom had any objection to the six-foot-high fence that he had had built. I'm here to tell you that it is a beautiful structure and so completely complements the front of his property. Not a single person who spoke during public comment here in person or on Zoom objected to the fence. No one wanted to see the fence reduced in height or altered in any other way. In my view, this was, uh, an example of the mayor using raw force of his position. Mayor Flaherty, two out of three wasn't good enough? Really? And Councilmen Chess and Vincent, a slippery slope? Come on. Uh, suddenly every homeowner in town living on a corner is going to request a variance to put up a six-foot-high fence in their front yard. Um, I realize that's an exaggeration, but, you know, come on. This, in my opinion, is an example of cookie cutter, one-size-fits-all governance showing an unwillingness to, uh, engage in any sort of discretion. I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Vice Mayor Rin and Councilmember Noack, uh, for their enlightened approach in the matter. I think I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kattenberg. Is there any that? Anyone desiring to give public comment in the audience here tonight? Seeing none, we'll turn to Zoom. Is there any, are there any callers on Zoom for general public comment?
We have one hand raised. Ms. Shostrom, please proceed.
Good evening, Mayor Flaherty, Mayor Rin, and council members. My name is Marion Shostrom, and I've lived in Pleasant Hill since 2001. I want to comment on an item not on tonight's agenda that is relevant to district elections. At the May 6th special meeting on district elections, several city council members spoke in favor of Pleasant Hill voters electing a mayor at large for a two-year term. The main reason, according to council members, what was that a council member now has a year to learn the task of being a mayor and would do a better job if they could do it two years in a row. I also learned at the May 6th meeting that a city council member can do that now and could continue to serve two terms with a five district map. The city council is not required to rotate the position of mayor among all city council members. Instead, the council goes through an election process each December to elect a mayor and vice mayor. Mayor Flaherty is the current mayor until the council elects a mayor and vice mayor in December of 2023. In December 2023, the council could elect Mayor Flaherty to serve a second term and Vice Mayor Rin to also serve a second term, both of which would end in December 2024, when the council would elect a new mayor and vice mayor following the 2024 district election. That means that if the city council selects a five district map, which is widely supported by community members, they could still have a mayor serving for two years. Um, I'd like to address a second issue, which is, um, regarding a mayor elected by at-large. Pleasant Hill, I agree that a mayor with experience on the Pleasant Hill City Council would be beneficial. A mayor elected by the city council, as is currently the situation, instead of at-large by the voters under a four district map, would keep the decision in the control of city council members. Under a four district map with an at-large mayor, it would be possible for the voters to elect a mayor with no prior experience as a city council member. I ask you to consider whether that is in the best interest of Pleasant Hill. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Shostrom. Any other comment online?
There are no hands raised.
All right. Uh, with that, we'll close public comment and move to item nine, the consent calendar. Do we have a motion?
I'll move, yeah. I'll second.
A motion by the vice mayor, second by council member, uh, Vincent.
Noack?
Yes.
Rin?
Yes.
Chess?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. All right, moving to item 10.1, adopt a resolution approving the funding for the 2023 Intersection and Crosswalk Improvements Project and the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds to pay for the Crossing Guard program for the 2023-2024 school year. Soon we have Monathan to make a presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council member. The item here in front of you tonight is Intersection and Crosswalk Improvement Project. Uh, this is an item that council have requested staff to take a look, what are the potential solutions to make our crosswalk safer than what it is right now, specifically engineering solutions. So I just want to give you a quick background. City is providing crossing guard service at nine different locations throughout the city. And each fiscal year, the last fiscal year, the crossing guard costs about $144,000. And the next fiscal year, it's expected to cost about $165,000. And city has also provided this service since 1995. Over the 10 years alone, city has contributed over a million dollars toward the service. As you know, the service that provided by the crossing guard is on a limited basis, specifically during the bell service time. So, one of the options that the council have asked the engineering is to come up with the solutions, specifically much more engineering solution, what makes us a city safe, especially the crosswalk at all time at 24/7. So staff have looked at numerous, uh, ways to improve and make them safer. And tonight I'm going to go through them and, um, eat intersection at a time to show what's existing, what's proposed. So also we have done several studies to evaluate, you know, what's happening at our crosswalk. Back in 2021, we did a sample test to make sure what kind of pet activity at all intersections. Following that in 2023, March, we did another study to make sure if our understanding is correct, uh, how, you know, people are using our crosswalk at what time. And we have looked at it throughout the day and we have looked at the pet crossing at all ages, not only school ages, also the adults. So here's the location. The title says priority. I'll come back to it at the end, why we labeled it that way. Uh, right now we have providing about nine intersections throughout the city. I would go in detail on the next slides. So the, what are the proposed improvements here? We are providing better visibility. Most of the crosswalk always tend to be not so visible, whether it's how far it is or the roadway alignments or time of the day, sun's shining on your eye, or maybe something blocking it. So the new proposed signs are like, and this is going to be LED flashing beacon system, where the stop sign alone is going to have an LED background to flash and provide a much better attraction and attention seeking. And second, we will have a beacon that is also LED that can be seen quite a far distance away. And also a speed hum. Typically, on most of the local streets, you know, you want to reduce the speed much as you can. And providing this physical barrier, it's going to further provide, you know, motor rest to slow down during an intersection. So one of the studies we have done is when you provide LED lights and crosswalk, most people tend to obey what the signs are there for. And the, as you can tell, over 76% of people come to a full stop for compliance, which is great achievement when you provide this. And also, one of the studies showed over 50%, the accident happened at the crosswalk after someone comes to a stop, then rapidly increasing the speed within the intersection. That's where the most tea, intersections, uh, accidents tend to happen. So what we have done here is we wanted to provide much more visibility and advance warning. And once people come to a stop sign, they will comply to the most part. Then we are introducing a speed hum or physical barrier. It further reduces, they won't be able to take off right after they stop. They would have to go through a hump and slow down. Then there, people will be crossing there. So you get an extra protection there. Most cities throughout the Bay Area have done these speed bumps, probably 50 to 100 feet away from the stop signs. So but, so they would slow down. Then within the 100 feet, they will speed up through the intersection and they may not even stop. So for a change, we know we are introducing the speed humps right after they stop to even further reduce the speed. So I just want to go through a few intersections here. One is Boyd and Patterson. Everyone is well aware of that area. It's currently always stop with the ladder crosswalk, uh, on the two segments. And what we are providing here is stop at signage, proper visible sign, then also the LED flashing signs. One of the proposal here is sometimes when you have proposal here is sometimes when you have a signs, flashing signs 24/7, people tend to ignore them. But what we are proposing here is the time restricted. So 7:30 to 9:00 and 2:15 to 3:30 is the bell hour. So that time, it will be flashing, and also it will be, you can call them. So if someone at 7:00 PM wants to use and have that protection, they can push the push button and activate the same visible signs. And also here, you can tell everyone will come to a stop sign, then you'll come through a speed hump, then you will move forward. So this is a typical scenario that we have used everywhere, and this is the next one on Pleasant Hill Elementary School, especially at Wendell and Paradise. And you, as you know, Wendell and Paradise does not have any three-way stop. So what we are trying to do here is further enhance the safety in that area there. We're going to provide the same signage, flashing beacons, and speed humps. Also, we're providing new three-way stop at Wendell because as you approach Wendell and with the curvature of the road, it's better to stop everyone there and slow people down as they go through the school area. Same thing will happen at Paradise Lane. Right now, it's a three-way for Pleasant Hill Road, and we will put a three-way stop sign there. So anyone moving south or north on Pleasant Hill Road, they would have to stop at Boyd, Oak Park, then also stop at Paradise. So you will reduce the speed within that intersection area to further make it safer. And Viking and Ruth, it's another always stop sign right now, and we will be providing these proposed improvements there. Moving on, Gladys and Helen, we have an always stop sign there and a crosswalk. And we're going to be enhancing the crosswalk and providing the proposed improvements. And Viking and Odin, it has a stop control there, and we'll be providing the ladder striping and stop. And also, part of this project, we will be providing another stop sign at Marola as well. So, another one is Gregory and Brandon. As you can tell, on Gregory, we won't be able to provide any speed hump given the nature of the street and the speed there. Right now, we do have a lighted beacon there. What we are trying to do is put some additional flashing beacon and advance warning to further provide warnings for the motor rest approaching that area. The next two ones are currently signalized intersection, Contra Costa Boulevard and Ellenwood. As you know, typically on a lighter intersection, you don't have a lot of improvement opportunity, like in a speed humps or any other ways. What we are proposing here is better detection. Sometimes our old traffic lights in the loop system does not detect pedestrian presence and bicycle pedestrian. So this infrared video detection system will detect the bicyclists as well as the pedestrian. And also, it will provide a kind of a priority timing for the pedestrians to cross safely from one end to another, and also provides a no-right turn while someone at the crosswalk. This is another same approach we will be doing at Monument and Buskirk. Same infrared detections, early release for the pedestrian, and also no-right turn. So with this, I am going to go back to the priority. Here's the budget. Each intersection costing about $100,000. This particular project was discussed at the Budget Committee, and Budget Committee has approved the proposed improvements. Also, Budget Committee have asked staff, is there any way to prioritize, you know, what are the intersection we would consider must-have or should include first, and some of them, we can work through it. So, part of that is, as you can tell, the ranking, what we have done shows the priority order that staff thinks that we should consider if budget constraints were to be in place. And two things to consider, Gregory Lane and Brandon, it already have a lighted crosswalk, but we are just enhancing it. The other two, Contra Costa and Ellenwood and Monument and Buskirk, two intersections that we are working with CCTA and MTC on a global approach to countywide signal upgrade program. And part of that upgrade is they are going to be contributing money towards upgrading our existing signals. So those are the two intersection that city could revisit as part of the improvement in the future. That improvement is not set to begin until late 24, 25, so we would have to wait that out. Other than that, those are the priority and something to, for council to consider when approving this project. And also, how are we going to pay it? Majority is going to be paid by Misha K., about $700,000. And we have some money from the sidewalk maintenance gap closure project. We'll provide another $100,000. And about $40,000 will be spent from the pedestrian bike program towards the design and staff to manage the project. As you know, this project, it's going to take some time to design and implement. That means we will not have these improvements in place before the next school year. So staff request that council consider allocating our power fund to continue the Crossing Guard program for another school year. And by that time, we will have most of the improvements in place. And also, people will be able to experience these improvement in place along with the Crossing Guard present for at least sometime in the second part of the school year. So with that, I'll be happy to take any questions you may have.
Fine, I'm going to ask a question.
Sure.
Are the crossing guards at each of those nine intersections?
Yes.
During the school year?
Correct.
And the proposed program for the next school year has crossing guards at each of those nine intersections?
That's correct.
And i- is the goal here to eliminate the crossing guard expense?
Correct. So eliminate the crossing guard, and this improvement alone, within four years, you will pay for it, so.
Those intersections where you propose the, the speed hump, there's a full stop, and then the speed up, and you proceed, there's not a second stop after the, the speed bump?
No. So typically, on an intersection, you will have only one stop to make sure, you know, the base stop. Once they come to a full stop, then you would have to climb through that, you know, three-inch-high physical barrier for the, you know, slow down before you go through that intersection.
So what's the distance from the full stop till you get to the crosswalk?
It's about five feet of that hump.
And does that affect site visibility at any of the intersections you're proposing? Have we, have we looked at that?
Uh, no, it would not, because the site visibility will remain the same, and just because it's very small hump, and we don't anticipate any side distance or visibility issues.
So stopping five feet before the crosswalk doesn't impact the site visibility?
Uh, no, because even right now, most of the intersections are pretty open, so, because as you approach it, you will be able to see both side of the crosswalk and also cars. And the good part is all of them are three-way stops, so people will be able to see a car approaching the stop sign.
Uh, Councilmember Shash, you have some questions?
Yeah. Mayor, um, I have a couple kind of general questions, and then some specific about the various sites. Um, I, I'd like to ask, first of all, or maybe prior to this, what kind of outreach you've, the staff's done to the schools in this area? And also, if this was to be passed, how is this going to be communicated to the schools?
So, this topic is being approached to the school. I think council member Noack might be able to explain more what we have done.
Yeah, Mike, I'm happy to jump in here. So, actually, several years ago, well, last time I was mayor, the mayor of Concord and all the mayors within the MDUSD program got together, met with the school district on several topics, but one of them that came up was the crossing guards. And it turns out that Pleasant Hill is the only one that still pays for crossing guards. Clayton does. I think they have two crossing guards. But everybody else does not pay for them anymore. Some had volunteers. That didn't work so well. Some of them are paid from other sources, PTAs or, or other areas. But originally, the school district paid for them. And when they couldn't pay for it anymore, they came to the school, came to the city, and the school, city has been paying for it, I don't know how many years, 10, 12 years, something like that. So we actually talked to the Ed Commission about the issue on the crossing guards. And I think there was a, even a bigger group I had to speak to because PHE parents somehow heard that I was pulling the crossing guards individually. I don't know how that got out. But anyway, so I've had several discussions at the Ed Commission about this. We talked to them, we talked about, you know, what opportunities there might be to work together, try to work with the school district, see if everybody could chip something in. And in so far, the school district has basically said no. The PTAs obviously are providing a lot of support to the schools, so they have limited capabilities. So one of the approaches that, you know, we talked about, or Anathan brought up, is can we address, use some engineering methods? And we presented not the specifics of this program to the Ed Commission, but some of the ideas in general, and gave them one or two examples from the intersections. And they were, I, I have to say, they were very pleased with it. They were obviously still a little hesitant about getting rid of the, the crossing guards, but I think they were extremely pleased with the engineering ideas that, that Anathan and, and city staff came up with. We're pretty happy about that. So there's been quite a lot of outreach through the Ed Commission, through some of the schools, some of the bike ped stuff, and through this mayor's group that met with the school district a couple of times.
Thank you. And also, just to follow up, you know, I did go to the Education Commission last year to talk about this topic, and recently, we had a presentation to them where they were going to go back to the parents and teachers to share the information, what they have learned about this program.
Can I continue, Mayor?
Please, okay. Uh, now, now I'm going to get into, well, actually, I saw something in here, the, the flashing lights. Are those, again, going to just flash? Are they going to be flashing by, by pressing a button, or are they going to the, are they going to be flashing just during school hours normally? I just wanted to make sure I'm clear on that.
So two parts of it, right? So the flashing side of it, there's going to be a big beacon on top of it, and also the stop sign evolved. And it's programmed to flash during the school, you know, bell hours. And also, you will have an ability, because there will be a push button there, where someone at 10:00 AM or like 8:00 PM, they can push it and activate the same system.
Similar to the crosswalk by the library?
Correct.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. Um, on the, uh, when you're showing the Boyd-Patterson crosswalk, if you are traveling north on Patterson, the way that, and just my knowledge of that intersection, the way that, with the stop signs set back, and there's, there's a lot of growth right there on the very, and I guess that would be the, whatever.
Southeast.
Thank you. Southeast corner. Are they going to be able, i- is someone going to be able to, if they're back on, are they going to be able to see the person going westbound on Boyd?
They will. And one of the things that we will be doing is, because these are the solar-based lights, you know, they need light, so we will be looking at the vegetations closely as we implement the program to make sure we trim back any vegetation, and also provide the added or necessary side distance there.
Okay, because that's public, I mean, that's probably private vegetation that we're talking about.
Right, but anything, you know, overgrows, you know, into the public right-of-way area, that, you know, we do have the ability to trim back.
Okay, great. And then, just also, on the Pleasant Hill Road Paradise, so that's going to be a permanent, going forward, a, a three-way stop sign?
Three-stop.
That'll be a three-way stop, not a flashing temporary between this hour and this hour. It's always 24/7, 365, a three-way stop.
Right, because that's going to provide the most requested info, because people tend to speed through that area. That is going to slow them down.
Okay. And, and then, um, my, my last question, on, on the, on the Brandon, Gregory Lane one, are, do we know, is most of the people in that crosswalk, are they going to, are they going to CTK? Or are they going to Strandwood? Or do we know that?
The combination. We have not gone to that, just because, you know, when we do the analysis, you know, we don't follow all the way through, but it's a limited number of students use that area, so now it is protected, but we're just going to add more signage to make it more visible.
All right, thank you. Those are all my questions at this time. Thank you.
I have a couple. Councilmember Vincent? Um, I've, I've seen those flashing red stop signs. They're very effective. You can see them very far away. Uh, you have a schedule related to the school hours, but during, say, summer vacation, will they still be activated for those hours, or will they be turned off?
We can turn them off, like, you know, when the school is not in sessions, we don't need to activate them, and we can go back to the regular demand, on-demand.
I think that would be good, because then when they start to deactivate it again, people will realize school's starting up, and be careful. And then on Wendell, that stop sign, is there any concern that traffic may back up onto Pleasant Hill Road?
On, because, you know, the, the curvature of the road, you know, it's kind of a asking for a, you know, slowed in, because right now, that alignment is not the very best in the city, so we want to make sure as people come down, they know that there is going to be a stop sign ahead, so they had to slow, slow down and go through it. I don't believe we have that many number of cars comes through that area to have a backup. I'm pretty sure, like, during the school drop-off area, you may have that, but also that will reduce the speed people from, you know, moving so fast in that area on Pleasant Hill Road.
And I think some of the parents are dropped their kids in the Oak Park Christian Center parking lot, but it appears if you're coming from the school, the stop sign is before that big driveway, where people would be coming out from the Christian Center?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor Rin, you have any questions?
Sure. Uh, I just want to follow up. Looked like the improvements on Viking and Odin, existing, there's already some temporary barriers that run down the middle of the road, the plastic things. Will those continue on as part of the redesign effort to keep those kind of temporary barriers in the middle of the road?
No, we will keep those temporary barriers there, because it's been effective, but only thing is it gets knocked on quite often. But we are only focusing on these improvements at this stage, but we will continue to have the improvements, but it's out there right now.
Okay, great, thank you. That was my question.
Is there some rule of thumb about the minimum distance to have between arterial stop signs on a city street?
It's basically a warrant study, and it depends on how it, how the behavior within the streets. You know, there are a lot of cities would even put lights at these intersections at Boyd-Patterson, but just because the demand is not there, so we are just proposing the new stop signs and added safety, but we can definitely look at it in the future. But most of the time, these are all done basis on a warrant. And we do the study and see what the behavior is like, how many pets are crossing, and how many cars are going through at certain time, and we evaluate what type of necessary improvement is there.
I thought there was an engineering concern that there be a minimum distance between stop signs. So they're not stacking up one after the other. Is that an engineering concern?
It, it is. Because we, we don't want to have too many stops where, you know, people tend to back, you know, we, we have a backup situations there. We definitely consider that. But the studies, the locations we have looked at it, it doesn't seem to be a problem. Or at least the engineering theory that we have used did not come out and say that there's going to be an issue.
Is there a minimum distance that engineers consider necessary between two arterial stops?
Um, there is not a rule of thumb or, like, in the numbers, it's all based on how many cars approach that intersection, and the area at certain time dictates it.
Councilmember Vincent's point seems to me that the stop sign on Oak Park, as you're approaching Pleasant Hill, immediately followed by the stop of Pleasant Hill, and immediately followed by the new stop suggested on Pleasant Hill Road could create some traffic concern, particularly during school drop-off and pickup times. And that Pleasant Hill- And that Pleasant Hill Road just on its own is a major, you know, commute uh thoroughfare. So we should just be cautious there. Um, I wanna go back to Council Mayor Shes' questions about uh involvement of the school district, maybe I missed it. Is, is there a plan or proposal to give formal written notice to the school district that as of the date certain, the city no longer will be funding crossing guards?
Yes, we will, again, we will reach out to the school district and let them know what other improvements are going to be in place and how the transition is going to happen, so they can inform the parents, uh so they can actually, you know, get, get to know how the system works, because that's the best part is we wanna make sure we educate the parents and we will be able to, you know, provide flyers out where they can pass that information.
So is your plan?
Yeah. Well, can I just add something there quickly?
Sure.
The, the superintendent and the board is aware of that. Um, I let them know a while ago that we were, would be considering um uh we were gonna have to consider um stopping paying for that because of the cost constraints. Um and so they're aware of that. The, the key thing that I think Anathan pointed out is they leave most of the traffic issues up to the administration at the schools. And so we'll really need to work with the principals at the individual schools. And, and we've talked about this with respect to bike and ped as well um on safe routes to school, working with the administrators at all the schools to talk about this, these engineering implementations, the um elimination of the crossing guards in the future and other um bike and ped um safety issues.
Thank you. I didn't mean to limit just notice to the school district, we should be giving notice to the the administration of each school within the city, and that's part of the plan?
Correct.
So is there a timeline when you intend to give notice to the schools and the school district? Are you waiting till your engineering um is done and contracts are in place for the improvements?
So we are waiting for your approval tonight, once approval is done, then we'll get to work. And a part of the design uh of uh these improvements, uh we will be generating and the necessary flyers or information that we can pass it on to the school district, because our goal is to, you know, uh pa- pass forward uh this construction process, because, you know, if we can get this project done a lot earlier, that'll be beneficial to everyone in in the city, because they'll be able to, we would like them to have the crossing guard as well as his improvement in place for much longer time for them to get used to it and see how it works. So we will roll this out ASAP.
Um, well, I'd suggest you give that notice, if, if council does approve this, give it sooner rather than later. Um honestly, I'm, I'm surprised that, I mean, I have one card for public comment, but I'm surprised that we don't have more people here knowing how passionate our parents are about crossing guards. And I'm just wondering whether it was clear that the item on the agenda was sort of a trade-off, the physical improvements for the crossing guards, as opposed to just the presentation for improvements of crosswalks and the funding for the coming year of crossing guards.
I mean, that's what we have done, you know, on two weeks ago, when we met with the Commission of Educations, uh we made it clear and they said they will go back to their s- school and inform them. And this will be the night uh for this hearing and to come back and um bring any concerns or any questions they may have.
No, I understand, you, you made the presentation to the Education Commission, but do we, did we have any follow-up to know whether they actually executed on that request that they informed the various schools?
So, we don't have a.
Any other questions of Anathan at this point? I know you have Jamie as well, did Jamie have anything he wanted to add?
I'm easier to help me, just in case if I get stuck.
All right, he hasn't come in to rescue, so you must be doing okay. All right, uh, well, if there's no other uh questions of Anathan at this time, I'll open up public comment. And we have a comment from Bobby Glover.
Thank you, Mayor Flaherty. Um, very appreciate, wanna start off, very appreciative of what uh the city has done, funding the crossing guard program these past twenty-eight years. I don't think anyone in the community knows, quite frankly, that now the Able United School District cut funding for crossing guards, two, that you fund the program annually, and quite frankly, three, that it costs a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year, so thank you. Uh my wife and I walk our daughter to and from Sequoia Elementary each day, utilize the crossing guard at the corner of Patterson and Boyd twice a day over two hundred days a year. I, I'm a little flabbergasted right now, I, I completely think it's unacceptable that it now appears that the recommendation is to eliminate the crossing guard funding after next school year. I, I took the, the item tonight as improvements, funding for the next year, but not the definitive, we're not gonna do it going forward. So I, I do think that that needs to be communicated before the decision is made, not after. Um, not gonna speak on all the intersection mentioned, um just a couple on Boyd and Patterson. Clear that this location has met the need for crossing guards in multiple studies. While I very much appreciate the city uh spending money on these improvements, I don't believe that the flashing stop signs and speed humps are going to alleviate the need for a crossing guard. I don't feel the humps are going to stop people from driving into the intersection when a child is crossing. I'm not willing to rely on a two thousand and three study from Texas twenty years ago. I also feel that those stop signs are gonna blink nearly non-stop for thirty to forty minutes in the morning and afternoon. We're already programmed to stop when we see blinking lights at crossguards at, at crossing uh intersections, making an already challenging traffic pattern on Boyd and Patterson absolutely unmanageable. Uh the crossing guard not only keeps kids safe, but also keeps traffic flowing as best as possible by holding kids for a period of time at the intersection. I believe this intersection should receive consideration for tier four, more, more closely resembles the intersection of Oak Park and Monticello where a full traffic signal is utilized. I know that that is more costly solution, but in my opinion, absent a crossing guard, it is the only solution that keeps kids safe and traffic moving safely. Uh the study commissioned by the city states that the blinking stoplights and speed humps are a minimum recommended improvement, yet the staff report indicates that these minimum improvements will alleviate the need for a crossing guard. I don't agree with that, and I don't feel that the parents of students at Sequoia are, quite frankly, the Pleasant Hill Middle School students that utilize that intersection as well would agree. I would like the city to consider moving this intersection to tier four, especially since the city states in the staff report that it quote receives resident requests for safety improvements at Boyd and Patterson annually. I think there needs to be more eyes on this. I think there needs to be outreach to the schools' neighbors to explain what is being proposed and give the schools and parents time to understand what is being proposed. I think our MDUSD board representative needs to be present at this to explain what the district is doing to kids, keep safe, quite frankly, to tell the city, thank you for what they're doing. The school district should fund this, fund this plain and simple. Unfortunately, they're gonna say they don't have funding, and if the city won't pay for it, the parents group, parent groups at each school are gonna have to add this item to a growing list of necessary positions. Regardless of how this proceeds, it definitely needs more explanation input. I look forward to working with the councils as it moves forward, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glover. Uh Lindsey Dolman.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor and the rest of the council. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, I was just here to uh congratulate Dave and Jen on their work at the Ed Commission. Um I am a current Ed Commissioner and wanted to kind of just provide a little bit of perspective from the meeting. We have been meeting about this with city um citizen in- input for the greater part of, since I came back on the commission, and I think in October. And the community is really passionate about keeping crossing guards. We did hear from Anathan and um and kind I wouldn't, I would say that we were pleased with the bu- with the improvements, but overall, we still know our community really wants crossing guards, but also understand that there is um budgeting issues and that the cost is somewhat prohibitive and that we are in a, in a unique situation. I don't think you're gonna find a single resident in the city that says that they want crossing guards to go away. We understand that we may be giving them, if this passes, for one more year. And we did talk um with Anathan and Sue about coming together with our schools. Um, I don't believe the commission really put it out there that this was the meeting, that that was being decided today, so I would not say that that was clear. Um, I certainly did not take that back to my um to my school end of the year, also probably just not real clear on that. But we did uh discuss, or sort of there's a sentiment of, if this does pass, we will try to work with uh Bike Contra Costa and other um community groups to talk to the schools about their individual options of what they, not what they can do as far as crossing guards, but how do we transition parents and students um from the familiarity of the crossing guards to what the engineering um additions are going to provide for us and how that we can, uh, we've talked about safe routes to schools, um talking at individual levels, so this is something that I think is gonna be a little bit of a surprise to some of the community. Um, we're wrapping up school, so this will be for, we were talking about for the next year, how do we start to work as a community to inform them that if this is passed come August twenty twenty-five, we would not, the crossing guards would not be present, so I just wanted to give that perspective.
Thank you, Ms. Dolman.
Yep.
Jonna Thompson.
I was hopeful that I would be sitting today and not talking, but um after hearing the presentation, I wanted to say that I did attend the Education Commission meeting and listened in. And I understand why we have to move away from the crossing guards given to the cost, and it is very unfortunate and very unfair to the families. Um but I also, I am a family that was um, what are they called, late friends for two years now. And as late friends, we do not have the luxury of crossing guards. Um each time we had to fend for ourselves crossing the streets and um it's not really fun. It's pretty dangerous with the little ones and strollers. Um on the presentation, I did notice that the school bell schedule was again focused on the early friends, late friends were completely misrepresented. Um so especially for Sequoia, school for late friends starts at nine thirty-five, so if the flashing lights stop at nine, we again would not be receiving any kind of support. And then we get to pick them up at one oh five, so if pickup starts at two fifteen, there's no one there to help or nothing there to help the kindergartners cross other than the parents. Um so it'd be really beneficial to look at the different bell schedules and see if we can also advocate for the late friends. Um and then on Wednesdays, it's early pickup time. And at Sequoia, it's pretty crazy, even when we go with the la- late friends to pick them up. Um so again, just advocating to look at those bell schedules a little bit more closely to make sure each student is um represented at pickup. And then I agree with um the idea of a stoplight at Sequoia instead of the uh stop signs, it's really scary to cross that intersection even during the late friend pickup and drop-off. Um and I think a stoplight would be more beneficial in that area to help with the flow of traffic if we are getting rid of the crossing guards. And two sections that I did not see represented in the um intersections looked at would be for the Gregory Gardens School. And so Taylor and Ruth, that is very dangerous, but I also know that is a vein of uh traffic that goes through, so I don't think that it would make sense for some of these, like a bump to be added, but to look at it a little bit more closely. I know there was discussion of something happening there. And another section, which I didn't see, was Harriet and Ruth. Um that one is pretty famous for trying to run moms over with strollers, nobody stops. Um and everyone just rolls through that stop sign that is there, so it would be really beneficial to see if we maybe can represent those families that cross that daily. Um, that is everything I had to say, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. So any other public comment here in chambers? Seeing now we'll turn to online, do we have any online comment?
There are no hands raised.
All right, we'll close public comment and bring it back to council. Um, I just have a, a question, maybe this is for the city attorney. Um, the decision to fund crossing guards beyond the school year that ends in June of twenty twenty-four is not before the council tonight, is it?
Uh no, but it is understood that if you put in the improvements, it's, they're in lieu of.
Right, implied that if we approve the improvements, we will not fund the crossing guards beyond the next school year.
Correct, uh it is a decision you could change.
Well, it, it doesn't appear to me that the resolution that we are asked to consider makes that a clear quid pro quo, approving one means you can't approve further funding for the school, the crossing guards. But I did ask staff, I mean, I think it's clear that that's the implication of approving the physical improvements is to uh forego funding after the coming school year.
Let me double-check the resolution, allow me to do that.
Uh yes, Council Mayor Shes.
The resolution, it just say, doesn't say eliminate, but it just says approve the allocation one.
I can't hear Zach speak.
Sorry, I'm, I'm, God, one of these days I'm gonna get it down. Um, what I was saying, uh, council member Noak, is that in the resolution, it does say that it, the, it's part of the resolution, it approves the allocation of a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars for one additional year. So it doesn't say eliminate, but it does say one additional year.
And that's normal annual budgeting, is that we approve the expense from year to year. That was my question, that i- if the council adopted this resolution, it's not expressly eliminating funding for future school years, although certainly sounds like that's what staff asking us to do without asking us to do that.
Yeah, I think it is understood that the improvements are in lieu of, but it is not something that is an action.
And, and so I just wanna be clear, I did not approve this at the Budget Committee. I, I did not uh say that I approved, I approved it to go to City Council for discussion. Uh and Council Mayor Noak and I had a disagreement over the merits of, of this proposal. Uh but, and, and one of the objections I had was that it was uh an implied uh decision to not fund future school years without saying that. And I did request that the staff report make clear if the, if the intention was to not fund future school years, that we should express that uh and not have it come out, cuz I really think that we'd have a lot more comment uh based upon what Ms. Dolman said, uh based upon just the people that happened to be here in the room that, that felt the need to speak out. Um so my, I'll, I'll just ask Anathan again, I think I know the answer. Uh if, if, would you still be recommending these engineering improvements to these specific districts if the council was still going to fund crossing guards without any end date?
Yes, because um first of all, I will, I do like to apologize for not following through your comments, but uh yes, we would, this is uh a, when we look at uh, at an um, at safety in and around school areas, uh this is definitely a much needed improvement. It will provide much needed uh necessary safety barriers uh for the kids and all ages, you know, users of a crosswalk uh within that area. So we would highly recommend that we still go ahead and do these improvements.
All right, um, thank you. Any other questions uh or comments? Uh Council Mayor Noak.
I would. Um, so, you know, I don't think I don't think we ever actually include resolutions, something we're not gonna fund. I mean, that goes through the budget process, so what we're gonna fund in future years, I don't think it's laid out in resolutions now. And I, and I think, I think the point that we were trying to make was that there's no guarantee we're gonna fund crossing guards in the future, because the rates have gone up twelve percent every year, and our budget is such that, 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 that makes it difficult for us to do. So i- it's not so much that we're saying we're never touching that, and that's, that's gonna be part of a resolution, but the, you know, the intent was, let's try to do this, because we're finding it difficult to do. I mean, this, this was discussed two years ago of eliminating the crossing guards period, and I asked uh back two years ago, or a year and a half ago, to at least, at least use the ARPA funds for at least one more year at that time. And because at that point, we didn't even have it in the budget, so I, I just wanna be clear on that we're not, we don't set budget items two and three, three years out, except for, you know, labor negotiations. We don't usually make those decisions, but certainly the implication is is that these improvements hopefully will make at least many of these intersections safe enough to reduce the number or eliminate the number of crossing guards. And I think, I think, you know, we really have to work with the schools and the school district. Um, this is important to everybody, the safety of the kids, not just, you know, not just the schools, not just the city and, and the school district. And I think if, if it's, they're needed in the future, um that cost should be borne y- you know, by several parties, not just the city. I just don't think, just cuz the, you know, the, the school district says we don't have enough money, well, we're looking at budget deficits as well. Why, why should we have a budget deficit and pay for it and not the school district? I don't quite understand why that that, that pain ought to be shared. So I, I think this is just something that we're gonna have to continue to discuss and not say, okay, this is it, we're never touching this again. I think the discussions will be ongoing as these safety measures are put in place as to what gets done, what we're, we're. as to what gets done, what works really well, what works less well. I did want to make, um, a couple of points on, that were made earlier on the intersections. At the Pleasant Hill Elementary Intersection, that is a messy intersection at best. It does back up, it backs up currently now because as cars come off of Pleasant Hill Road and go to go into the school parking lot, they stop there and they can't turn. So it stops, it stopped anyway, regardless of whether there's a stop sign or not. It is already backed up. So I don't think this is going to hurt it any more than what it is currently because maybe it'll actually help the floor flow because it'll give some room between cars to get in into that parking lot. So, um, I just want to make comment on that as well. You know, my concern, and I made this at budget committee, um, that the speed humps, um, have been called for a lot in the city. We have it as every city around us does, and I have to say in Connecticut here as well, has issues with crazy drivers. And I don't know what happened during COVID that made everybody just be totally irresponsible about their driving. And we talked about this in the bike ped plan, we talked about it in this, how we can work with the, with the parents and everybody to get traffic to slow down. And this is something that's going to take not just speed humps, but some serious work on everybody's part, working with the schools. Because a lot of our traffic issues in Pleasant Hill are school driven. We've got to work with the parents of those kids to say, hey, you're putting other kids at jeopardy by driving crazy because you're late or you're distracted or something else. We have got to work as a community with everybody in this community that drives in this community to take it down a notch and pay attention for bikes, peds and everything else. And so I think that's something we have to work as well, not just put speed humps and flashing lights and stuff like that. People that are driving distracted or driving crazy sadly are still going to do that. But that also puts a little bit of responsibility on bikers and pedestrians as well to, you know, when they cross, make sure you look at that person's eyes and make sure they see you before you cross the street. Now, I mean, that's what I was raised with, and I assume everybody else was here too. So this has got to be a multi-pronged approach. I just think this is a really good start to really improve these intersections that we have around the schools where we have a lot of issues.
Thank you. Any other council comment? We have city attorney has some information for.
Well, I just want to, I just want to point something out. You know, the whereas clauses, the recitals in the resolution are not binding, but they are setting the, the stage. And, uh, the third whereas says the city wishes to implement engineering improvements and additional traffic control measures to augment pedestrian safety and eliminate the need for crossing guards. And then, and then it talks about which the service the city has provided since ninety-five at a cost in excess of a million dollars over the last ten years. But then when you go to the now therefore be it resolved, that's the part that's binding. And so the first part has to do with the funding of these improvements. Second part, um, is approval for an allocation of funds to pay for the crossing guard program for one additional year, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So those are the two things that you're actually taking action on, that's the binding part. But I will point out that in the recitals, there is mention of elimination of the program.
And I would, you know, describe the whereas as a statement of policy. Not necessarily a binding.
It's not binding at all. No.
Statement of, of policy or as it says intent. Okay. Anybody else? Vice Mayor Ren?
Yeah, so I appreciate the clarity on the definition of the whereas's and that. And I would actually make a motion to strike the portion, even though whereas is just advisory, um, that we go to the third whereas and remove everything after to augment pedestrian safety and then strike and eliminate the need for crossing guards. And then which provides, so the second half of that, just strike that, uh, from there. In favor of the improvements. And so the binding part down below, um, where the funds are coming from. I think those are great steps in the right direction. And yes, when we get to designing it and engineering more specifically, we can look even more specific at those intersections if we need be. And then I think it just says that the second part of where we're getting the funds to pay for this next school year. But it doesn't say elimination of crossing guards of that, it's just saying for this next school year, we're paying out of the ARPA funds for the crossing guards. And then it can be an ongoing dialogue and discussion on future, if there's any kind of grants or, you know, without having to hit the general fund of the city, which is a concern, operating in a deficit going forward, um, we can have those conversations, which will get us through a whole nother school year with crossing. Are kind of my two cents on that.
Yeah, I think I could see changing the wording that eliminates the city funding for crossing guards as our stated intention and policy. I don't know that the need for crossing guard, that's certainly subject to debate by anybody who wants to weigh in on that subject. Whether crossing guards are needed in any particular intersection. But I think the goal is to eliminate the city's funding of it. I think the other cities that do not fund, there are crossing guards in place in their schools because of local volunteers or, uh, fundraising at the school level or something that gets crossing guards or parent volunteers. I know this is totally dating me, but in my day, the older students were the crossing guards for the younger students. So, but I understand that we can't use child labor anymore like we used to. But, but seriously, uh, so I, I, I take what Anethan said, uh, you know, viable, that these are important engineering improvements to just for the, the general safety of the pedestrian public using these intersections to make these improvements. Uh, and that we would be doing them or suggesting we do them without regard to the crossing guard issue. They just happen to be discussed together, that, you know, there's not really one for the other. I understood Anethan correctly, he would be recommending we make these improvements anyway, even if there was still somebody funding a crossing. So my, my comments were more driven to that I'm not sure how clear this was to anybody following the actions of city council, that the intent expressed of eliminating the funding of crossing guards was part of this proposal. Not that it's a binding decision tonight, but that is the expressed intent and, and one of the stated rationales for doing the engineering improvements as well. But I don't know, since it's not a permanent elimination of the funding, that discussion can continue on from budget year to budget year. But I think what's very important is that we do get the word out to the schools, a formal notice that, you know, the statement of intent that this is passed by the council, that the city no longer intends to fund crossing guards beyond the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And, you know, let somebody else step up. Let somebody else step up to the plate.
Mayor Flaherty?
Yes.
Uh, thank you. I, first of all, I just wanted to, you know, I wanted to thank, you know, Sue and her efforts with working with the education commission on this and getting, and, you know, getting them involved. I think it's really important. And so, so thank you for that. And I, I believe I would support what, uh, Vice Mayor Ren is proposing in this, if we could do that. You know, this, this is a really good, this could be a really good story for our city, right? Uh, you know, we passed a measure K and here we are using seven hundred thousand dollars of measure K to, to, to do this, uh, to, to do these engineering improvements. These are fabulous engineering improvements, but it's going to get marred by, um, citizens rightfully thinking that we did this without their, you know, real, without that opportunity for them to, to, to chime in a little bit more. So to, to Mayor Flaherty's point, I think, uh, if we can go ahead and get this kind of going, get the, get the funds going, get the project moving and, and really had to, and to council member, uh, Noak's point, really have, uh, a clear, focused communication plan around how we reach out to these, to, to the, to the residents. Because they, um, I, I too was surprised that there weren't that many people here tonight. So, uh, that's, uh, my two cents on that. And, uh, I think, uh, I think this could even, I mean, it wor- worse comes to worse. If crossing guards are eliminated, whether it's one year or two years, I think it's important for residents to understand by having that conversation that we funded this for, to the tune of a million dollars over the last ten years. And to let them know that their district has not, um, that we've been doing that on our own. And, and I think, you know, I think the, the residents may not like the decision, but at least they understand it, why it's happening if they have more context. And I think that takes a little bit of time. And so that's why, um, I would support, uh, getting this going, but perhaps, uh, writing this, this resolution or making some alterations as Vice Mayor had, uh, Ren had suggested, uh, so that we can get this going and, and, uh, people aren't surprised by it.
What about just modifying the whereas to state the, the, the intent is to eliminate the city's funding of crossing guards? As opposed to the elimination crossing guards?
That's what I would, I would, I would support that. I think we have to, I have to, I think we have to make that comment. It's in the whereas statement, it's not a resolution. This comes up, you know, from, and I have to tell you, there are a lot of parents out that know about this. Having spoken to many of them, this, they are aware of this. And you know, sir, I, especially at a, at a couple of schools where the crossing guards are, are, are fairly important, especially, um, specifically PHE. You know, and, and we've, I have also communicated because we do have a new traffic light going out in Civic, which will help a lot at the, um, and crossing at, at, uh, College Park and, and Valley View Middle. So, um, there are a lot out there. But I think we have to just indicate the intent to reduce or eliminate city funding of crossing guards. Not saying the program's gone, but the, we don't have any place to, to get, cut the budget to put this in. I, you know, if you want to cut that whole sentence out, please tell me where we're going to get the money to pay for it. Cause sitting on the budget committee, I don't see it.
Vice Mayor Ren, what do you think about?
I would.
The wording that I've suggested.
Well, I think that obviously at the budget committee, you're having ongoing discussions. And every year you kind of look at the budget and the projections. And I, and I think that that's just an ongoing conversation that needs to be had at the city. And I know it's been going on for a while. And I've been on the, um, education meetings with Sue on a lot of those, um, even our last one about a month ago, where we had a lot of people from PHE. I'd call them the bike ped group that came and spoke at that about the concerns that, you know, some of the, the things that are going on around PHE. So we definitely hear that. I, I just don't, I think we continue to have those conversations. We have funding for another school year that, which we put in this resolution from our ARPA funds. It's not our general funds and, you know, basically we have a little bit of extra money that we can fund it more, but there's not money in the general budget to continue beyond that. And we need to look for alternatives and solutions, but we need to kind of have that conversation and those meetings, um, about the process going forward. And so I, I still am kind of opposed because I, like you said, I, I feel like it's being worded as a quid pro quo. We're going to give you these nice new sidewalks in exchange for taking away the crossing guards. And, and that's not the message that we need to be sending. It's, that could be a hope or an aspiration of ours down the road, and we can look at it as a budgetary element. But I, I think it's, it's really going to tarnish, uh, like council member Shes said, that we have an opportunity, uh, with the measure K funds to improve some intersections around the city. And we need to kind of leave it at that. And if it opens up the opportunity, um, to look at, implement that into the crossing guard conversation. But by kind of combining the two in this process, I, I think, yes, they're kind of one in the same, but they're also two different conversations, uh, to be had. So I, I still don't really want that impression of a quid pro quo. You know, hopefully it'd be great, these new intersections are fantastic and there's no issues. We won't need the crossing guards, um, and that, that we can all hope for. But that may not be a reality, and I don't want to close this chapter on those discussions and what we do as a city to put, continue to put pressure on Mount Diablo School District. You know, on the PTAs, I've been on site council, no Strandwood Elementary too, and I know how tight the budgets are for PTAs these days. And just trying to fund the basics for a school district. And I, I'm not trying to throw Mount Diablo under the bus. But, you know, their lack of funding for anything in the schools these days is just horrible for our kids. And our PTAs have to come to the rescue just for basic. I mean, you look at librarians or school counselors or anything like that where it's just, you know, the amount of resources that are needed, especially the kids. And I don't even want to go into too far of a tangent on a lot of kind of stuff, but, but yeah, I mean, Mount Diablo needs to step up. We need to look at a collaborative effort. But I really don't want us to kind of have that message of a quid pro quo in this resolution. That's why I'm proposing that we strike the, we eliminate the need for crossing guard section of the whereas. Even though I know it's advisory, I think it could be misinterpreted and it's the wrong message for these, uh, intersection improvements that we're proposing.
But why not just, why not just eliminate the word intent of the city funding? We're not, you know, we have a many, we have men, we're not paying for it this year out of the general fund. And we're not paying for it next year out of the general fund. And we haven't, we don't have the capacity in the general fund to pay for it. So I don't, I don't, and I wouldn't expect, having been a mother whose kid walked and rode their bicycle to school for years, no parent is going to say, yeah, I'm okay getting rid of crossing guards. Would any parent ever say that? I wouldn't. If I was given that option, yes or no, I would always say keep crossing guards as a mother, right? So I think we have to sort of indicate in this the direction we're heading. We've got a whole year to work on this. We got a whole year to work on the school district, the PTAs, the parents, everybody else with that whereas in there that we are intending that we're unable to fund this after the next year. We don't have the funds to pay for this. So we're not saying get rid of the crossing guards, we're just saying we can't fund it going forward. I mean, if we all of a sudden come into some massive money, we can certainly bring it back and look at it, but we have to communicate this somehow to the parent group that we have, we can't afford to pay this going forward. And when, when do we do that officially? By trying to get the word out, I, we know how difficult that is, right? A lot of the parents don't live in Pleasant Hill. Not a lot, but it's a significant number. I don't know how we're going to get all this information out.
Well, can I?
It's still going to be bad news. It's still going to be bad news. We started to do this all year while we're doing these engineering things, it's still not going to be pretty.
Good. I, I, I don't think anybody, I mean, I, I'm not going to speak for council member Ren here. I'm not saying that we're going to go find a magic bucket of money. I, I, I'm not, I think none of, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying, I, you know, I think we need to be, you know, you know, I, I, it'd be nice, it'd be nice to try a little bit more, you know, you're just like, how are we going to let all these people know? I think, I mean, do we let them know by, they're going to think we already made the decision that it's binding and it's done and it can't be brought back. I think that's a bad message to send. I think we can kind of.
Why would they think that? Why would they think that?
Because we're saying elimination of crossing guards.
No, we're saying, and no, we're saying elimination of the city paying for the crossing guards. Not elimination of crossing guards, we're saying elimination of the city funding the crossing guards. That's what, that's what Mayor Flaherty is suggesting. Not saying eliminating them, just saying eliminating the city funding them.
I'm just looking at how this is read, eliminate the need.
No, it says what you say, but my suggestion was when, when council member Ren suggested eliminating the entire whereas, that I thought there was a way to salvage it, uh, that met both of, of comments from both.
Which whereas is?
Yeah, third one. Third whereas, whereas the city wishes to implement engineering improvements and additional traffic control measures to augment pedestrian safety.
Because the whereas before that says provided recommendations for proposed infrastructure solutions that both replace crossing guards and simultaneously provide an ongoing level of improved pedestrian safety.
Which I think that's fine, because that's apparently what the study did demonstrate. But it's, it's the next paragraph that says that we're eliminating crossing guards. And I don't really think that was.
Eliminate the need for crossing guards?
It was, it was to eliminate the city's responsibility for funding crossing guards is what I think is, is the concern here for budgetary reasons. And making improvements, engineering improvements to the crosswalks for just general public safety.
So are you proposing that and eliminate the need for city funding for crossing guards?
Augment pedestrian safety and, uh, reduce or eliminate the, the city's funding of crossing guards, which the city has provided since nineteen ninety-five at a cost, blah, blah, blah.
You had to reduce or, reduce or eliminate?
But, yeah, this is my words, I was just kind of thinking on the fly here.
Yeah.
I mean, assuming the council wants to express this sentiment that it wants to reduce its financial commitment for the crossing guards after the 23, 24 school year ends. So let's just start there. What, what do you think about that as an expression of policy for budgetary reasons to eliminate that cost? Or a goal of limiting or reducing our outlay towards crossing guards? You know, from my perspective, Sue's right, you know, our budget is, is stretched.
Yeah, nobody's disagreeing with that.
And, you know, and it's, it's a balance here. You know, I like the fact that we've been providing crossing guards and that separates us from our surrounding communities.
Yeah.
That we found a way to do this. But I think we're maybe at the end of that road here. We have a lot of competing pressures for budgetary dollars right now, and we're struggling. So it, my concern is just making sure that, you know, parents don't find out when they, they start walking their kid to school in, in September of 2024, and there's no crossing guard there. And, and, you know, that we have a real strong outreach. And, and I do appreciate all the, the groundwork that council member Noack's already done and her, her community conversations with her contacts and like, but I think we need a more formal push from the city, an actual letter to, you know, the schools with a request that copy of this letter be put in the end of the year, school packets that goes home with every student. So everybody is aware of it. And then, you know, whatever we can do to support, but you know, if there is a desire to keep crossing guards, a solution other than the city's budget needs to be found. I think that's the message that we're, we're trying to send. You know, I'm not sure that the engineering improvements are equate with the actual crossing guard. I mean, they're, they're valuable engineering improvements, but I don't think they replace the actual protection that a crossing guard provides. Some of the comments from, from Mr. Glover about, you know, corralling the kids and crossing them en masse. I mean, as opposed to one at a time. And, and I don't think that the, the mechanical control of the intersection is going to allow kids, every time they press the light's going to change, right? They're, they're going to have to, you know, self patrol themselves. Anyway. Having said all that, I'm fine with approving the engineering proposal on the understanding that they're necessary and recommended by our, our engineering staff, and we have the ability to fund them. And I'm fine with expressing the intent that the city's goal is to eliminate its responsibility for funding the crossing guards after the 24 school year end. And I'm fine with approving payment of the coming school year with the ARPA funds. And I'm fine with modifying the language of the third whereas that expresses that we're not stating we're eliminating the need for crossing guards. We're eliminating or reducing the city's commitment to fund the crossing guards. That, that's our goal. And I'm fine with that.
Is that a motion? I'll make that motion.
Oh, I don't know. That's here from, that's here from the vice mayor, I mean, he may not agree with me, I want to give him.
No, I, I'll accept that friendly amendment to it. And I, I think that clarifies it. And it doesn't state a quid pro quo on this project. And that, that was just my concern, the intent was not for that for this project. I think you expressed that, uh, but by the way you articulated your, your motion.
Was that a motion? Does that satisfy the city man, the city attorney?
I'd like to read the language that I think we're going to sub in for the third recital, the third whereas. See. Whereas the city wishes to implement engineering improvements and additional traffic control measures to augment pedestrian safety and reduce or eliminate the need for city funding of crossing guards.
I'd take out the need, just to reduce or eliminate the city's funding for crossing guards.
Reduce or eliminate city funding of crossing guards?
Correct.
Which service the city has provided since 1995 and at a cost in excess of $1 million over the past 10 years alone. And then proceeding on, is that acceptable?
It, it is to me.
It is to me.
It is to me.
Yeah. And I think that leaves the door open too, if there's opportunities for collaboration with PTAs or other transit funds or grants that wouldn't come out of the general fund from the city, then it leaves that opportunity for us to continue as a city to work and partner with the schools themselves. So I agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the city man, city attorney made a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution as modified. And it was expressed by the city attorney.
Second.
We have a motion by myself and a second, council member Noack. We have a roll call.
Noack?
Yes.
Ren?
Yes.
Chess?
Yes.
Vincent?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes. Thank you, everyone, for your patience and for all your comments as well. We're at the end of our agenda. And I want to adjourn the meeting tonight in the memory of Dr. Carol Wayland Connor. She was the founder of the White Pony Express, a Bible member of our community. For those not familiar with the White Pony Express, it is one of the largest food rescue programs in California, and it's located right here in Pleasant Hill. It delivers thousands of pounds of fresh food and new clothing to the underserved in Contra Costa County. Dr. Connor was also the founder of Following Francis, a non-religious service organization offering free programs and activities to help people living on the margins of life join the mainstream. Her presence will be missed. The next city council meeting will be a special meeting regarding the general plan and housing element scheduled on Thursday, May 18 at 5:00 PM here in the council chamber. So we'll adjourn to our May 18 meeting. Thank you, everyone, and good night.